Good evening. We're in the open session portion of our September 15th, 2020 Selectman's Meeting. We did have an earlier executive session. We discussed three matters having to do with collective bargaining and litigation. There's nothing to report on those at this time. So we'll start our open session as we usually do with a salute to the flag and a moment of silent reflection.
At what do we do? To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we begin, tonight, we do have a public hearing. But before we begin, I'd like to welcome our new administrative assistant up in our office, Jess Charleswick. Good evening. Everyone's met, I think, through the course of the week or so here. But welcome to your first meeting. And also welcome to his first meeting, at least live meeting. This is Selectman Wayne.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
It's nice to see you up close and personal. Kind of up close.
It's nice to not be on a computer.
Yes, absolutely. All right, I have actually. It works out perfectly. 7:05 on my phone. We have a public hearing. Mrs. Melvin, would you like to read the notice, please?
Application for restaurant wine and malt beverage license. Application is made to license the board of the town of Norwood for restaurant wine and malt beverage license by the company and PBA Gold's Jolly Man and Manager of License under Chapter 138, action followed in Chapter 140 of the Mass General Law. As amended for the sale of wine and malt beverages to be drawn from the premises of 655 Washington Street, Nova Mass, written on premises as follows, 1907 East 653 Washington Street, East to a one-room dining area, seating for 40 people. In that bathroom, service area where dining, exits where inside dining area. Both hearing was application to tell on Tuesday, September 15th, 7:00 PM in Public Safety, Union Room, 135 Manhattan Street, Nova Mass. Gordon J. Flassco, Chairman John Smalley, Eleanor D. Donaghy, David K. Carr, and Matthew E. Lee, George N. Yor, vice of local license board.
Thank you. Good evening, sir. Could you, for the record, introduce yourself and tell us what your businesses before this afternoon? We have your application, of course. But it's a chance for you to tell the public what you're up to and what you hope to do down there.
First of all, good evening, everyone. My name is Jol Gimmire. I'm all the way from Nepal. First of us. And I'm living in Norwood. I'm trying to open the restaurant here in Norwood, Washington Street. It's called Norby Spice. I'm trying to serve the Himalayan cuisine so far, Indian and Nepali food. The previous owner, what he have the menu, I'm going to put that one too. And I apply for the beer and wine license as well. So last Friday, I got the health inspection. So far, we are done with that. So I'm trying to officially open from tomorrow.
Could you go into any detail if you have on your experience on the background?
Yes. I used to have same type of food in South Way, Mid-Mass since 2010 till 2017. And after that, I came to Norwood. So I just wait for something. But there was same type of food also I have, including the liquor license as well in my business.
Did you have any incidents, any reasons?
I didn't get that. That far, so far, I didn't get that trouble.
Any questions, comments? It looks fine. You've had time to read the application. See no further public or any public comment that detain a motion to close the hearing?
And... Oh, I'm sorry about that. I sent the notice for related neighborhood, next neighborhood though. I do have that paperwork from Post Office. I send the... Yes, sure, I do that for her.
That's four, six of the notice up there. Okay, vote. All in. Unanimous. Any action by the board?
Move to approve.
Second on the motion?
Motion being approved.
On the motion, Mr. Smalley?
I think this restaurant doing cuisine will be a terrific addition to the food, beverage, and entertainment mix of our town. I'm happy to endorse this application. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mrs. Darnier?
Just one question, please. Are you familiar with the Kathmandu Guest House?
Yes, I do.
That's one of the most famous places in Nepal.
Before I came to the United States, I used to work just near the Kathmandu Guest House. There was my uncle's big rug shop.
Oh, my goodness.
Just like two minutes before to Kathmandu Guest House.
Well, you'll certainly have good luck in the restaurant.
Thank you very much.
That's one of the most famous places in the world.
Yes, thank you so much.
Okay, on the motion, did I take a vote? No, I did not. Mr. Wayne? Oh, I'm sorry.
Could you say, good luck, you're welcome, and wish you all the best?
Motion to approve the alcohol care line license as well as the common vicuums. All in favor? I'm sorry, I'm thinking we're still online here. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous. Thank you very much. Good luck. That's the luck in your business.
Good luck.
All right. We have a couple of requests for use of the town common. One is to use the common for Friday, September 25th, 2020, and Saturday, October 3rd, 2020, from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM, for purpose to hold a class that would be up no more than 15 participants, be social distance. It's a fitness class. It'd be no charge. I had a question. We already voted to open up the different schools and fields for the actual companies that are charging because they can operate in close quarters. Why is this one looked at any differently?
My guess, because it's a free fitness class and it's on the town common. Had it come through as a request, like any other businesses to lease field space or use field space, we would have run it through the rec department, which is the process for who... This, I think, I don't know if it's more of a marketing or just a more of a citizen interest type thing. It's a free event, so it doesn't sort of fall into what we were doing for some of these other businesses. And again, it's the town common traditionally comes to board for...
Well, the common does. I'm just wondering why we didn't direct them to one of the other locations?
I mean, it's free. It appears to be more of a common event than a...
The board of the board or any other comments? Motion to approve. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Second request is for a wedding on October 24th, from 4:00 PM to 4:30 PM. Expected to only have 10 or 12 attendees.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Vote unanimous.
Mr. Chan?
Yes.
It's nice to see Donald Charisi around again, just in time for the 150th celebration.
He's always around.
He helped us so much on 125th.
Donald's always around. You just have to watch if he moves fast. Okay, Stephen Brody of Town Meeting Member. He has written a letter or an email suggesting that we consider outdoor fall special town meeting. You all have copies of that. I have responded to Mr. Brody saying, thank you for your comments. And board members will certainly take them under advisement when we're considering calling a town meeting. And there may be problems with that because of the winter months and that we wouldn't be in consultation with the moderator on that. And the moderator has also responded to Mr. Brody. So unless any of the members feel they want to make a particular comment, we can probably table that. One?
Move to file.
Move to file. Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Cemetery deeds for approval?
Motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Traffic Safety Advisory Committee report. They met on August 25th. They discussed a 25 mile an hour, a townwide speed limit on our roadways and blockings on Manhattan Street and Lennox Street, just past the Public Safety Building. Their recommendation is not to implement the townwide speed limit and to install more signage and additional striping between Lennox Street and the entrance to Shaw's. Questions, comments? Ms. Wayne?
I said a comment, Mr. Chairman. So the last traffic study was 2014, but we're expected to do one...
Correct the speed study on those roads.
Okay, great.
No other comments? No other problems with the recommendation, accept the motion to...
We're not saying that. We're not saying that we wouldn't have certain streets if warranted post year 25. We're just not, we're saying at this time, the recommendation is not to implement the townwide.
Correct.
That's what we were asked at this time. All right, so motion to approve or accept the recommendations of the Traffic Safety Committee? May second, Ms. Wayne? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Mr. Mizuko, A, B, and C, why don't you just start, sir?
Thank you. A is a request for the board to authorize placing out to auction two tax title properties, 36 Grand Ave and 459 Manhattan Street. These properties are tax title properties. There's been some interest on one of them in the adjacent owner purchasing properties. We have two more properties that we either come up with tax title or at town meeting in the fall where there have been some interest in them. They're all smaller lots like this. So we're just seeing if the board would like us to go through with the tax title auction process.
So we have interest in one, 459 Manhattan Street?
Correct.
So why don't we only consider that tonight? Why are we considering both?
The other one is a tax title property that the board could consider selling if you so choose. There's another parcel on that road that we're still doing some deed research on that appears to have been an abandoned paper street that we're just getting the bottom of. That way, we can bring that to the board, as well as another property near the Cleveland, sorry, the Callahan that we're looking at. It's a tax title property. It could be available lot. You could put it in a deed research and it's not available lot. I think the neighbors have encroached on it a little bit. It is one of these small parcels that's been off the tax rolls for decades. It's up to the board's discretion whether we'd want to go forward or not.
Has the neighbor expressed any interest in purchasing?
Not this particular parcel. I think it's one of those where some folks may not even be aware that the town owns it, but we would otherwise not have a use for it. It wouldn't really be a great location for a pocket park. We sort of looked at it as we look at pocket parks because it really is what looks like a building of a lot in between two other houses. So it would just be a little, little bit of an awkward spot to do anything with.
You're going to bring up this forward all together, right?
Yes, there's two others we're looking at, both of which just require a little bit more research. These, we at least finished the research portion.
I prefer to table that one, 36 Grand Ave, to consider with those at that time. But move along with 459 because that's actually in the backyard of the applicants. Doesn't really benefit anyone else. There's no access to it.
Correct.
Except for over their property and another household or on the, I think it's Pine Street.
Correct. And we may not receive a bid for it. It's just there's been some interest. Whatever we said is a minimum for the taxes, somebody may not be interested in paying.
Right.
But at least if we go through the process and if we get no bids, we've looked at it and we can sort of put it to bed for a while.
Thank you. I think it's really important that we ask the town assessors office to take serious looks at what the value is to each lot, even though it appears that there isn't too much value to it. For example, the lot on Manhattan Street that's behind the frontage lot, if that were in a zone where an additional structure could be attached to the house that exists, that parcel in the back would be a house lot with less value. So each, I'm asking that each parcel be studied to make sure that we get enough so we won't give these things away.
That's actually a required part of the process. The assessors have to assess a value to the parcel. And then we work with an auction firm that can also tell you what you're thinking you get for. We don't just make a number up for an actual parcel. If it was a little sliver of land, but the assessor will get us an actual value of what the parcel is worth and what the taxes would be owed on it.
In the past, we relied on the assessors and they did a good job.
Yes.
We, do we have to pay the other firm for their opinion?
Auction firm, they, what they get paid comes out of the sale of the property.
Right, but I think our assessors...
Well, we have to auction it. So what I'm talking is you work with an outside auction firm to actually go through the auction process for the property. They don't come up with the value. They'll tell you based on what they're doing around the state if there's something there. But the assessors come up with the value.
And in the past, we didn't use an auction company to auction the land off. The selectmen made it, relied on the assessors, and we just sold it.
Whether it's tax title or not.
Correct.
Tax title property.
Tax title has a very specific process. It's actually in some ways the easiest property to sell. If it's not tax title, it has to go through town meeting for them to approve selling it. Tax title, you don't need to go through town meeting. It's a specific process and it goes to auction.
Mr. Flassco, in the past, I don't think that we used an auction for tax title property.
I think we did.
Do you?
Yep.
That's the common process in cities and towns for tax title properties.
Still on? Just for clarification, tax title means property that has come to the town because of nonpayment of taxes.
Correct.
We've taken title because of nonpayment of taxes. Now we are just in this case interested in selling it.
Yes, in selling, both these parcels were tax titles, I think, in the 30s. So this is, they've been sitting in the town's books for quite some time.
Well, I would say, I think he's already in the right upset, inconsequential regarding 40 BA. I think it's the right move. Do we have to accept, say we don't get what we want?
The town of Norwood can always choose to reject any bids of any company.
Which is fine, which is why I think we should go with the goal. And if we don't like the Grant Street number, you just say, well...
You set a minimum with the auction and you hope to get higher than it. So if 10 years of tax or whatever the number happens to be, you set that minimum to decide what you want.
There may be some issues with Grant Ave. So it might be good to take the time until the next pieces of property come forward and discuss on them, see if there was issues, are real or not? And if so, is there any way of working them out in the...
Sure, if the board would like to, we'll, we'll prepare this one for tax auction. We won't put it out yet. We'll finish research on some of the other parcels, bring all four of them to the board. One of them, I believe, does need to go to town meeting for approval, should the board want to go in that direction. But we can certainly wait until we get the other two resolved.
Mr. Chairman. While we're on it, there's a, there is one lot of land that we discussed probably four years ago and decided not to move forward with any kind of resale. And that's the, that the cove of Sterns and Elliott. If you recall that one.
We also had a discussion about the same lot on Grant Ave.
Yeah, okay. I mean, I think that one should probably be included in this, in this collection as well. Thank you. All right, so...
Question, please. When, what's the last lot that we sold?
I mean, the last tax title property we sold? I'd have to take a look at that.
Any lot that we sold in the town. What is the last lot that we sold?
I'm not sure. I'd have to take a look.
So what is the difference in when you go to town meeting and when you don't?
So tax title property doesn't require town meeting approval because it's something that the town has taken in tax title. You can hold on to it or you can put it out to tax auction. That process is governed by a decision of the selectmen. It's technically a decision of the treasurer, depending on how you want to read statute. If it's not tax title property, it's land owned by the town of Norwood. We can only sell land with the approval of town meeting because town meeting has the right to decide whether land is sold or not, or purchased.
Thank you.
So from the discussion I just heard, which went around a little bit, you're going to start to prepare, we're going to basically table this until you come back, but you prepare it...
Internally, we'll start getting ready.
Internally towards tax, towards selling it because you have a very strong opposition. But we won't take any formal action.
Correct.
Table tonight until you return with a full presentation.
Absolutely.
Motion to table?
Was there an amendment to add that I didn't mention today?
He's going to do that.
Well, the staff did want to bring back a pocket park proposal for Sterns and Elliott. We started working on that in the spring and then COVID hit, so...
Well, include it towards if we decide to sell, you have all, you're prepared to go.
We will include it for discussion of the board.
Include a lot.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And then we'll table for the board. Thank you. All right, Ark, South North Hope Life Works.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the board knows, annually, we appropriate about $19,000 to the Ark of South North Hope. They're rebranding it as Life Works. They assist adults with disabilities in the community and in the region. As we're going through every year, just cleaning up some of our accounting practices, we need to actually enter into a contract with a nonprofit. We can't just provide direct funding for any services they provide. So we drafted up the contract. That's ready to go. I had this put on the board's agenda, just so the board could have a brief discussion. Every year, there should be some signal from the board to include it in the budget, to include it in the warrant. And we sort of just let it go every year in the budget. I think it's a great program. We get a great value for it. You may want to invite their executive director once a year just to talk about the services they offer. But just bring it up for discussion among the board. If, once a year, you want to just take a look at it and continue to direct the staff to prepare the budget and the warrant in that way.
I think that would be a viable, that we set it up that they come to before the board next year so that it has kind of a tickler so that we remember to have a contract. This is required and the town did do this in the past, but some years, just somehow, you know, it's a routine operation, if you will. We want to take these services and they want to provide them. It just goes on and somehow people forget to enter the contract, especially where it's set up one year. It might exploit too if we can do it more than one year at a time. I mean, the money's appropriated annually, but maybe you can have a 10-year contract subject to appropriation.
That would probably be a better way to handle it.
But it'd be nice that we have them in and update on their activities and what services they're providing our residents.
We will arrange that.
All right.
I think it's an excellent idea about having a longer term contract submitted to appropriation, which is great. But I'd also like to see the contract a little bit more strengthened. People's idea of what's reasonable or adequate liability insurance differs widely. We don't see what that is. There's no beginning date or end date and stuff like that and other issues. I think we typically have in a contract, not trying to make over burdensome for a 501(c)(3) company, but, you know, moving into a longer term contract, I do think we've strengthened the authority on it.
Okay, so if you'll work that, formalize the contract and getting them to maybe come in, set up a plan for them to come in.
We'll invite them to a future board meeting so you can meet there.
Start date will be moved forward from there.
Yes, sir.
This isn't anything new. We've been doing this for many, many years.
Right, it's just clear how...
Make sure we get it formalized properly.
Dodging the i's and crossing the t's.
Okay. And the final one is...
Uh, Mr.?
This has to do with our tenants?
Yes, tenants for two properties on Central Manhattan Street, the OCC and the Print Shop. We're recommending the board vote to allow a rent reduction of 75% for the months of July, August, and September, and also for October, November, and December. In this capacity, we are land boards and we have several rental properties, these being two particularly lucrative ones. The rental property for the OCC property is a very lucrative contract to the town. The gross revenue to the town for that property over 20 years is $4.7 million. The tenant there, both tenants pay quite a bit of rent, but that's a property that pays a $700 a month rental payment, taxes. They're responsible for all the maintenance of the building, plus water, sewer, electric, et cetera. So given the impact COVID has had on the rental market, given the impact it's had on businesses, trying to look out long-term, how do we preserve the long-term value of those leases and ensure we have tenants in those properties generating revenue for the town? I think it would be prudent to continue with rent relief as indicated here so that we can hopefully keep those properties occupied in the long term. The Print Shop lease is a, I believe there's four years left on it. The Restaurant lease is in, I think, the first year of a 10-year lease with an option to renew for 10 additional years. It's an incredibly lucrative lease. Mr. Jar prepared a list of all of our leases here. And you can see it's third only to telecom leases, and even then only by a couple thousand dollars. So we're just trying to look out what the long-term value of these contracts are and taking short-term loss to try to ensure long-term tenancy.
Okay. Mrs. Darnier?
Thank you, Mr. Mizuko. Thank you for your work on this. Good job.
Thank you, Mrs. Darnier.
Mr. Smalley?
Just to review the numbers real quick. There was roughly the OCC is $7,800 tripled net a month and the other print is about $1,600.
Correct.
A month tripled net, okay. So I mean, and we're talking about roughly a three-month commitment until the end of the year, at which point we'll evaluate, I guess, is it?
Yeah, we would never want to go long-term. The world could certainly change. We could be in the same situation or a sore situation. We initially were going to bring this to the board in three-month increments. It got delayed on the agenda a little bit, so we're sort of well into the first of those three months.
I mean, a good tenant is a real good thing, especially in difficult times. And they're both excellent tenants. So I think it's a good business, frankly.
Thank you. Just clarification for myself and the record. This got delayed, as you said, and were actually in September, which is the last month of that quarter. So this would be retroactive to July?
Yes, retroactive, consistent on making sure that both properties are caught up on anything else they may, their prior rent payments and any tax payments are due.
And any other comments or motions?
Motion to approve.
Yeah. You know, these are tough times for everybody. So government oftentimes has to step in to help those in need, whether it's individual, which we have done in this town with regards to rent money or store money, whatever, or corporations, when we try to help businesses which we kind of grant money and disability, the ability to reduce rents. So I agree with the policy of spoken that we need and should do something. I just want to caution, this is actually a nine-month commitment. The first three months were free. And now for the next, for the past three months, we're, because it's retroactive, it's 75%, then it's then 75% reduction takes us to the end of the year. So I just want us to be cautious that, you know, this is likely not going to end just like that in December. We'll be back at this, talking about what we can do and along with individuals and corporations hurting. I think the town is also going to be hurting. So just want to balance everything and look at the stuff. So, you know, going forward, we could have a much more advanced look at what we're being asked to approve rather than looking at something that goes all the way back to March, April, and May, I think would be helpful. But no, I don't see a reason why we wouldn't try to help these folks out.
Mr. Smalley?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would agree with Mr. Jar's assessment. I think I had read some articles over the weekend, specifically there was one in the Globe from Saturday that said, you know, this is sort of the tip of the iceberg, specific to the restaurant business. So I think some of the testimony in the articles that, you know, help from landlords is really the first thing that you can do to try to get a restaurant, you know, healthy. And I think we're in a position to do that, which is pretty unique, I think. I'm glad we're able to do it, but it's going to be tough. I think, like David said, in three months or six months, we're going to be in the same position to reevaluate. And the same with the printing business. I think that, you know, events aren't happening, people aren't printing things, so it's tough. But I'm glad we're able to do something, so I appreciate it.
The motions?
I made a motion before to approve.
I didn't hear it. To approve the recommendation?
Yes.
Is it a second? And any other discussion for a discussion? The only thing I would add is as we look towards December, we try not to get in the situation we are. And I know this was not your doing necessarily, but definitely we're here at the end of the quarter. So we necessarily make sure we have a tickler and get this taken care of the first or the middle of December. Can't go to the end of December because we usually take a few weeks off there.
We'll bring it back much earlier.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you very much. Stadium is unfinished business. It's just noticed from the ABCC that they submitted the final approval of a project collateral for Yankee Spirits at 942 Providence St. Pike. collateral for Yankee Spirits at 942 Providence Turnpike. Mr. Manager, do you have anything additional?
Just a couple of quick announcements. Dean Street is progressing, still on time and on budget, so we're hopeful, happy that that project will be wrapping up. Just another couple of weeks, it'll be on time. The cover came in, was installed without an issue. Our town hall parking lots, as you can see, there's some work being done. We delayed a little bit as we got some drainage work done on both lots, but it's good we have not opened those lots up in probably 40 or 50 years, so it was good to get some drainage fit under them. They're otherwise proceeding. I think we'll be putting the first coat of black top down in the next day or two, weather dependent. CIP, the capital improvement committee, will be meeting soon, in the next couple of weeks. I don't think we've set a date yet. The staff are working on some changes to the CIP. As you know, we almost sort of have two years to CIP because we delayed a lot of our projects. We'll be bringing the proposal forward. There's a few small projects that have been added to the queue. That being said, on the good side, we, this past year or last year, approved about $160,000 for LED upgrades between the library and the police fire building. We believe between the work of the facilities department, rebates that the energy manager is going to be able to get in using our green community grant funding. Both of those projects may be able to be entirely covered without needing that borrower authorization. If not entirely covered, we believe we can probably cover 80, 90% of them.
How much was it?
It was about $160,000 between the two of them. So it looks like above 80% of that will be covered by grant funding. And last but not least, the sound system for the town common, which has quickly become the longest project of my life, believe it or not, should be up and running by the end of the week. At the end of this week. We're waiting on one final piece of the puzzle to be installed. The speakers are there, the wiring is there. This is, we've been actually working on this for close to two years. It just feels like the project will never end.
Around the here, I guess, I'm trying to relate.
Correct, but hopefully it should be a kickoff around the end of this week, but we're happy that it'll be there. It provides some nice, sort of easy listening music at different times when people are using the common in the area there.
Are you taking requests? Who's the district?
I think the charter says. There's something small in the charter of the manager getting to the DJ. And no karaoke, I've not even told, so.
And the area coverage is from where to where?
More or less the common, if you're on it, the adjacent areas of the common. The system was designed in a way that we may be able to eventually extend it throughout the downtown area, but just getting one for the common, so if you're on Central Street or if you're on the common, you will be able to listen to music. We have been, again, working on it for what feels like 100 years.
It's going to be worth it. That's the thought here.
Question, please. Mr. Manager, how are our relations going with the North Hospital?
So, well, relationships are going well. I'll be meeting again with them this week. They continue to work on the challenges that they're facing. I don't think I have any more of an update on that. Inspections meets with them probably two to three times a week. The fire chief and fire chiefs in the area meet with them twice a week. The health department is on calls with them a few times a week, and I talk to the hospital president probably two to three times a week, if not daily. As we've said, if, I don't know if anyone's had a chance to see the flooding video that they released a few weeks ago, the hospital suffered massive, massive damage.
I would like to ask the board if we could talk with the hospital. I don't know how you want to do this, either ask them to come to one of our meetings, or ask a couple of our board members to meet with the manager in the hospital. My, I have a very, very, very big concern here because when the storm happened, I think it was June 20. Right. It was supposed to be that the emergency room would open up four to six weeks, then it went to eight weeks. Now, there's only one person working at the hospital, the person who manages the generators to make sure that the power doesn't fail. So I don't see any work going on whatsoever toward reopening the emergency room. And that, and the hospital is doing planning and is doing zoning changes and is proposing a huge change in the use of the premises. We want the hospital, we need the hospital desperately, and personally, I want to help the hospital, but I think that they should keep their end of the bargain and get going on getting the emergency room open. So however, we think that we can help them to understand that. I'd like to ask the board if we could do something about that.
Well, we meet, we meet with them, the manager and myself and all our other departments and heads have been meeting with them to see what we can do to get them up and running, what we can do to assist them and what they need to do. We can talk more directly about trying to get certain services such as emergency up. Unfortunately, they get to be quite complicated. They are looking at the possibility of a satellite site now that they could set something up faster than trying to get back to this site until the site is dealt with, but all that's up in the air. Doesn't do us any good to say it out loud when next week it may fall apart, but they are looking at those things and we can keep up the pressure, if you will, from our perspective of what we need them to add as quickly as possible.
Are the, the old, I understand that the La Russa building is, will be torn down.
I don't think that's been decided yet. It's just, given the level of damage, it wouldn't make sense to both reconstruct that building and they're not going to continue to operate the building with all the MEP systems in the basement where they've already flooded once. The big challenge they're facing is the mechanical and electrical and plumbing systems for the whole building aren't functional. So I know it's tough for us to say, hey, the ER is over there and that building looks fine, can't they just flip the light switches on and get it up and running? The amount of work that the building needs is substantial. I don't think Stewart is delaying anything. They've lost, they've spent a couple million dollars already on some of their teardown work, and they're losing millions of dollars every single day.
Right. On the other hand, the other, what was the extent of the water damage in the old buildings?
All of the electrical systems need to be replaced and all of the plumbing systems need to be replaced.
In the two old buildings?
Yes, because all, that whole system got flooded with gray water. So if you want to think about your home, it's the equivalent of doing a renovation where you have to pull out all of your electrical wiring, all of your plumbing, and all of your, your heating system and everything else. That's why the damage is substantial. I know we look at the building and we say, hey, it really wasn't flooded, it's, it's not that damaged. The building is a building, yes, but it's all of those systems. And then what they have to do is they have to replace their electrical room. All of that flowed into the La Russa building, so they would have to completely replace that, and to try to do that on a temporary basis is difficult. You start looking at not just code issues, we've told them, we've worked with them anywhere we can, but can you have a temporary generator? Okay, well, how do you have a temporary oxygen supply, a temporary gas supply, and another temporary electric supply? It becomes this incredible mess to try to get everything up temporarily that just the pieces aren't fitting into the puzzle.
I'm not sure about how much water damage there was to the old buildings, and it was my understanding that there were two units, 60 beds each, that, that existed under a different use that could be converted for a new use to support an emergency room.
It's about the functions of the building and the mechanical and the electrical and the plumbing. That's what needs to be up and running, and a hospital has very strict code standards. Anything that gray water touched, so that surface runoff or floodwater, has to be replaced before it can be reused in a hospital.
I'd like some verification of the amount of floodwater that was in the two old buildings.
Okay, so, but Mrs. Donnie, I don't think you're getting the point that it's not just the fact that a little bit of water went in if it's touched certain parts of the building. Now, this isn't just me as the manager saying this. Our inspectors have verified this, our fire department has verified this, and this is what we're hearing from the engineers and the facilities people at the hospital. So this isn't me making it up. If gray water has touched parts of the system, it has to be completely replaced. It's a hospital, it has to be built and designed to a higher standard than my home or your home or a building, because if there's any gray water that got in there and they reactivate that as a building, the potential for mold growth in a hospital is critical. So it's just a very, very difficult, challenging situation. Stewart is losing millions of dollars every single day. They have an asset that generates a lot of money, it's generating nothing and calling the millions of, costing the millions of dollars. It's an emergency room. It's not as simple as dry out the water, flip on the switches, and call it back. We're spending a fortune sending police and fire all over. Nobody wants the ER open more than I do, but it's not a simple matter of just bullying the hospital into hurry up and get an ER up and running.
It's not bullying, it's a, it's a, it's an honest question. It's not bullying at all. They're the ones that said that they would have an emergency room open. They're the ones that are come to, going to come to us to ask for zoning changes and, and new concepts under zoning and to change a part that's the center of the town in a very, very big, big way.
Right.
And part of that should be being a good community member and providing emergency care. It's not fun to see our ambulances zooming off to Needham, zooming off to West Roxbury, zooming off to Brockton.
I don't think they're delaying the opening of the ER. They don't not want to open the ER. I, I think that, that, you know, it's not my job to defend Stewart, they're a private entity, but it's not like they're sitting there saying, well, we don't care about getting the ER up and running. The longer they're down, the likelihood that their competitors will come in and pick up more of that business. They're not sitting there saying, we don't want to get an ER up and running. Believe me, they've been working on it, the town staff have been working on it, inspectors have worked on it. Everyone wants an ER up and running as soon as possible. You have to do it safe and you have to do it in a practical manner, and you have to follow the rules and the regulations and the codes. Nothing in any of my meetings with them, and Mr. Plasko's been in these meetings with them, the building commissioner's been in meetings with them, the fire chief has been in buildings with, meetings with them. Nobody thinks they're not trying to get there as quickly as they can.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other moving business before I entertain a motion to adjourn?
Just, just a couple of items. One is I wanted to wish all the students, teachers, administrators, and parents in the starting of their school year this week, I believe it's on Thursday. Lots going on and significant changes have occurred over the summer in preparation for this. They may not have all the answers at the start, but they'll work through it. They have every conference in, in the administrators along with the teachers and working through it, so I really want to wish them good luck. Two things. One is that MMA had a webinar today that I did attend, and they talked about, they could talk about the school issue as well as police reform. And two different bills have passed the state, one in the Senate, one in the House. The Senate bill is extremely aggressive about what they want to do in reviewing actions of individuals within the police. The House is a little bit more lenient, talking to Chief Brooks. Massachusetts doesn't have the issues that Portland has, Chicago has, even New York City with, with the mayoral issue, but, you know, there's already a lot of training that goes on for every Massachusetts officer. We don't need to wait for the state to do it, so. One of the big issues is, is the whole qualified immunity, and they talked, at first, the Senate one is extremely, you know, want to get rid of it. And I think part of the discussion that I swear to everybody is it would present a huge legal problem for not just the individuals, but cities, towns, and the state in trying to deal with, with it. So I think that may not be as harsh as how it started off with because people are now seeing that there can be a lot of money spent, a lot of time in court by towns like us trying to either be sued or in defense of those. So a lot of those can be discussed, you can hear a lot about it, so. And the last thing is, in the beginning of this month, one of the things that they prioritize in, it's come before us before in different forms, is the whole solid waste master plan. What is Norwood going to do? It's hard for us to do it as a single town. It needs to be more regional. The state is coming up with their next version of their 10-year plan, but they're extending out to 2050. And the two top diversion that they're trying to reduce by 570,000 tons is food material and the second highest is cardboard at 220,000. Air fitness, while the, nowhere near those two items. And we've heard Mark Ryan before us talk and talk again about food and, and cardboard, how it's a big problem, and they are trying to address it. So they took final comments over the summer with five public hearings, and they're going to be coming out with their final recommended plan that's going to follow us through to 2030, which is going to include some incentives for town to do it. It was a very interesting article, if people want to read that. I think you see a lot of things that individuals have brought before us, either individually or when we've talked about other streaming of products, so just my thoughts, thank you.
No questions?
Yes, sir.
Do they, David, I'll, I'll read it, but did they, are they talking about the possibility of ending a single stream recycling? Recycling is where really the cost is skyrocketing.
They didn't talk, they really talked about different categories of recycling in different programs. They really didn't go full in-depth about the single streaming, which is.
I attended a workshop with Mr. Ryan on, on that matter, and it sounds like the state's pretty much falling what's expected to be industry-wide around the country.
Right.
I have something happy that I can talk about.
I don't have to talk, we know.
I had a call from Jim Garrity, and he said that the United States, our congressman, Steve Lynch, in this past election got more votes than any other congressional candidate in the United States of America in a primary election, Steve Lynch. And, and, and over the weekend, former Vice President Joseph Biden called him and congratulated him. So we're so proud of Congressman Steve Lynch, he does a great job for Norwood. That's happy news.
Yes, Ms. Looney?[1704.87]